So we are going to get started. I hope that you can all see me and hear me okay. My name is Joanna Barron. I am joined by my colleagues Christine Van Gynne and Russell Phillips. And this is our town hall, which we're going to be hosting quarterly to talk about our work, to interact with you guys, to answer your questions. And the original title and theme, let me just pin my video, actually, just a moment. Right, that's better. Make sure we're all set here. Okay. Christine, the three dots for you aren't working, so we may have no video for you guys. Unfortunately, I would love for you guys to be able to see, oh, there she is. We have video. Okay, great. So let's get into it. So originally, the title of this talk was COVID and Civil Liberties. And we were going to talk generally about some of the Canadian Constitution foundations' work on civil liberties and the different cases we've been involved in, the different rights that have been implicated over the course of the pandemic. But of course, as of about three weeks ago, things took an unexpected turn. And so the topic that is most pressing to talk about is the invocation of the Emergencies Act. And of course, this is sort of the first look. CCF just filed an urgent application challenging the Trudeau government's invocation in the Emergencies Act late last night. And so I'm honored to be able to walk you through that application, walk you through the arguments that we make, and answer any questions about it. So the way that we're going to flow is, I'm going to talk about the application. I'm going to talk about our justification for challenging the invocation of the act, why we think that the government was not justified within the basic statutory requirements of the act to invoke it. We'll see how long that takes. And then I would really like to talk to you about some of the litigation that we have in B.C. concerning vaccine passports, talk about the overall rights that you have that have been implicated throughout this pandemic, and then, of course, to leave some time for Q and A. So just so you know, this is going to be a moderated Q and A. And so my colleagues are going to be receiving the questions. You'll see in either the Q and A box or the chat box. You can enter your questions, and Christine or Russell will be reading me the questions towards the end of the session. If we don't get to your question, I apologize. There's going to be many of you. There's 174 people here right now, and the number will grow. You can always email us, and I'll give our contact information at the end of this session. So without further ado, let's talk about the Emergencies Act. So by the way, if you're just joining, my name is Joanna Barron. I'm an executive director of the CCF. We are at the C-H-E-C-C-F dot C-A. I've been in this position for just coming up on three years. My background is as a criminal defense attorney, and I am based in Toronto. And this is my life's work, and it's an honor to have an hour of your time today. Wherever you are in the country, if it's first thing in the morning, or if it's your lunch hour, we really appreciate you spending some time with us and learning about your constitutional rights and how they're protected. So as I mentioned, late last night, the CCF filed an urgent application for judicial review of Parliament's decision to invoke the extraordinary powers which are contained in the Emergencies Act. Now, let's just talk for a moment about what the Emergencies Act is. It has a pretty dark history in Canada, and I don't say that with any type of hyperbole. It was originally introduced to replace the War Measures Act, which was used during the Second World War to intern Japanese Canadians and Italian Canadians. And it was used during the F L Q terrorist crisis in Quebec, 1970. And so in direct response to this history and to the perceived overreaches of this history, the Emergencies Act sets out a carefully crafted, very rigorous set of binding conditions, which are meant to ensure that it is only used as an absolute last resort and very, in a very time-limited sense, not for a moment longer than necessary. And so as you probably know by now, this act has never been invoked before. And over the decades since it was passed, of course, this country, we have weathered terrorist attacks, recessions, and other economic hardships, an unprecedented global health pandemic. And yet, we have never before needed to resort to these extraordinary powers contained in the Emergencies Act federally. Provinces have invoked emergencies, as they did through the course of the pandemic, and we can touch on that later, but this act has never been invoked before. And so the question raised in CCF's application is very simple. Were the strict legal requirements of the Emergencies Act, which were strict for very good reason, where they met before the federal cabinet on February 14th, 2022, last week issued the emergency proclamation, the emergency measures, and the economic measures, which were subsequent to its invocation of the Emergencies Act in response to these protests in Ottawa, as well as across the country with border blockades? And the CCF says that the answer to that has to be that the requirements were not met. The Emergencies Act vests cabinet with extraordinary powers to unilaterally proclaim a public order emergency. And after it proclaims a public order emergency, it gains vast legislative authority, encompassing the power to create new criminal offenses, police powers, without recourse to Parliament, without advance notice, without public debate. And it also grants the federal cabinet powers that are actually in core areas of provincial jurisdiction, covering property and civil rights. Canada is, of course, a federation. And so we say that it's unconstitutional, not just vis-à-vis executive powers and the proper scope of executive powers, not just vis-à-vis charter rights, but also vis-à-vis the basic division of powers. And that's why you're seeing things like Alberta announcing that it's also going to be challenging the invocation of the act. And we hope that other provincial premiers will also intervene to protect their constitutionally delineated division of powers. And so this act has, as should be clear by now, deep effects on our federal democracy. It presents a huge risk of executive overreach. And we see that the government has in the past abused these emergency powers, that this legislation was specifically intended to prevent. And so we have said that the courts should interpret this act strictly. It is a quasi-constitutional statute. Furthermore, we say that the cabinet did not have reasonable grounds for concluding that there was a public order emergency that justified invoking the act, no matter how challenging, complicated, messy, difficult it perceived the ongoing protest to be. It was simply not absolutely necessary. And I'm going to get into the specifics of why we say it wasn't absolutely necessary. But the law requires that this act be a true last resort. However, as we've seen, federal, provincial, municipal law enforcement already had all of the legal tools and all of the legal mechanisms they needed to clear the protests and blockades within their disposal. And if there was a failure to respond, a perceived failure to respond, that still doesn't mean that the government was justified or authorized in invoking this act. Simply, the strict conditions were not met. We also say that the measures, particularly, I will talk about the financial measures contained within the economic measures, which is the ordering council violated the Charter. The prohibitions created capture such a broad range of conduct, including lawful protest, that carry with it the threat of fines or imprisonment and risk creating a chilling effect on otherwise legitimate forms of expression. And the economic measures, of course, require banks to disclose private-protected bank information to the police, which amounts to a warrantless search, a warrantless and unreasonable search of private banking information. And so both sets of these measures create clear violations of Section 2, Section 7, and Section 8 of the Charter. And none constitute reasonable limits that can be demonstrably justified in a free and democratic society. So as I mentioned, the predecessor of the Emergencies Act was the War Measures Act, which has been described as superseding all existing laws, providing overarching powers for cabinet to govern through regulation, and permitting overriding of the normal operation of the federal system, meaning the division of powers between provinces and the federal government. And what do we know about the history of this act? It was used to support censorship, to permit internment. It was used to justify actions taken by the military during the Quebec City conscription riots, to impose preventive detention, to permit the internment of thousands of Japanese Canadians, to authorize the confiscation of their property under the guise of expropriation, and the registration and internment of alien enemies in both world wars. And now, its modern-day replacement, the Emergencies Act, has been invoked. However, it was drafted to ensure that these types of abuses never happened again by protecting parliamentary democracy, federalism, and rights. And the overarching principle is proportionality. So every section of the act, every provision, is designed with the intent of limiting the federal cabinet's power to declare an emergency to only those situations where it can be demonstrated that it is absolutely necessary, and the powers only last as long as the emergency strictly requires it. So let's walk through the definition of emergencies in the act. So a national emergency in the Emergencies Act is defined as an urgent and critical situation of a temporary nature that, A, seriously endangers the life, health, or safety of Canadians, and is of such proportions to exceed the capacity or authority of a province to deal with it, or seriously threatens the ability of the government of Canada to preserve the sovereignty, security, and integrity of Canada. And, C, so there's A, B, and C. It needs to seriously be a danger, seriously, or seriously threaten the ability to preserve the territorial integrity of Canada, and it cannot be effectively dealt with under any other law of Canada. And so there are four different types of national emergencies delineated in the act: public welfare emergencies, public order emergencies, international emergencies, and war emergencies. And each variety has different requirements. And so here, as I'm sure you're aware, cabinet has declared that this is a public order emergency. This is an emergency that arises from threats to the security of Canada that is so serious as to be a national emergency. And threats to the security of Canada is defined as, A, espionage or sabotage, detrimental to the interests of Canada; B, foreign-influenced activities within or relating to Canada that are detrimental to the interests of Canada; C, activities within or relating to Canada directed towards the threat or use of acts of serious violence against persons or property for the purposes of achieving political, ideological, or religious objective within Canada or foreign state, which is also the definition of terrorism throughout Canadian law; and D, activities directed towards undermining the constitutionally established system of government in Canada. And here, the government has identified the nature of this public order emergency as C. So violence directed towards ideological ends, which is also the definition in various other legal instruments in this country of terrorism. And so even if we grant that there was some basis for this government to conclude that there was a threat of violence, which our reasonable opinion is that it hasn't, but there may be some information that we haven't been made privy to. But even if we grant that, this is besides the point. Invoking the emergency measures is unlawful because there is another key requirement, which is that there is no other law in Canada that this situation can be dealt with under. So one of the key justifications for invoking the act, of course, was the impact of border blockades and the impact that border blockades were having on international trade and international relations. And indeed, these border blockades were extremely significant. There was a blockade on the most significant trade artery in North America. However, we know in reality that the border blockades under the Ambassador Bridge in Windsor, Coots, Emerson, Sarnia, Suria, were all cleared by police using existing provisions of the Criminal Code, provincial laws, including Highway Traffic Act legislation, you know, basic legislation that we have on the books that says you cannot block a public roadway. And these blocks were all effectively resolved, most of them before the federal government invoked the Emergencies Act without recourse. But all of them were cleared without any recourse to the powers granted by the Emergencies measures. And there are currently no border blockades. So of course, each charge that the police has laid in relation to the border blockades all involved existing provincial and criminal code legislation. Not a single charge was laid under the allegedly indispensable necessary new offenses created under the Emergencies Act. If there are future border blockades, they could effectively be addressed in the same way through existing legislation and the exercise of existing federal and provincial authority. Recourse to the extraordinary powers granted by the emergency measures simply not necessary. Let's talk about the protests in Ottawa, the ongoing protests, or rather, the protests that dragged on for over three weeks, which seem to more or less have been cleared. Similarly, here, the federal government already had the power to provide, if needed, additional officers, the Ottawa Police Service, to establish joint command with the Ottawa Police Service, as well as the Ontario Provincial Police. And also, we saw that it exercised those powers prior to declaring the emergency proclamation. In the Prime Minister's press conference on Monday, he was asked directly which provisions in the Emergencies Act was necessary for him to not revoke the emergency proclamation and to declare an ongoing emergency. And he specifically called out the need for the Emergencies Act in order to compel tow truck operators. However, even here, Section 129B of the Criminal Code makes it an offense for a person without reasonable excuse to refuse to assist a police officer in the execution of their duty. So this could apply to tow truck drivers who refuse to assist police by making their vehicles available as needed to preserve the peace. So again, the sufficiency of using existing legislation, existing authority to address the protests in Ottawa is shown clearly by the fact that every single charge that was laid when the police entered to end the blockades were laid under existing criminal code provisions. Not a single charge was laid pursued to the emergency measures. And if the federal and provincial government decided that they needed to take steps to limit financing of future illegal activities, there is existing authority of FinTrak, financial oversight over payment processing platforms, which already requires these platforms to report suspicious transfers, including transfers to and from crowdfunding sites. As well, the Attorney General already has the power under Section 490.8 of the Criminal Code, which would prevent a person from disposing of or otherwise dealing with any interest in offense-related property. And so again, just to go back to the purpose of this act and the history of it. When Parliament passed the Emergencies Act in 1988, it did so fully remembering and recognizing our country's dark history of abuse under the War Measures Act. And it specifically sought to limit the applicability of the act to situations where it was strictly necessary and that these powers would never be invoked unless existing law was truly demonstrably incapable of dealing with the problem. But why is that? Well, invoking emergency powers should be extremely rare because emergency powers often lead to rights abuses. I've already mentioned Canada's history under the War Measures Act. And the reasonableness of Parliament's invocation of the act must take into account whether these emergency measures and economic measures violate the Charter. And I'm going to get into our analysis now of why both sets of measures, the emergency measures and the economic measures, create serious violations of core democratic rights and freedoms under Sections 2, 7, and 8 of the Charter. So the emergency measures, as well as Section 2 of the economic measures, all violate the core democratic rights to freedom of expression, association, and assembly, which are guaranteed by Sections 2B, 2C, and 2D of the Charter. These rights have been interpreted by the Supreme Court throughout its history since the adoption of the Charter in the broadest possible terms and proposively. The emergency measure creates prohibitions on attending assemblies or protests, on engaging in fundraising, either as a donor or solicitor of donations. And these are clear-cut violations of these rights. Section 2 of the economic measures is designed to discourage, prevent participation in constitutionally protected activities, which is also a clear violation of rights. It therefore will fall to the government to justify these violations on Section 1, under Section 1 of the Charter, which invokes the famous Oakes test, which asks whether a limitation on rights can be justified in a free and democratic society, and which involves looking at whether the impairment on rights is minimally impairing and whether it's proportionate, whether the curtailment on rights and the importance of the governmental objective are proportionate. And so we say under Section 1, under an Oakes analysis, these prohibitions will fail. They're not minimally impairing, and their bad effects, their damaging effects on rights outweigh their salutary benefits. Section 2 of the emergency measures criminalizes participation in a demonstration that might theoretically, at any point in the future, reasonably be expected to lead to a breach of the peace. And the measures provide no guidance on how to determine whether a breach of the peace can be reasonably expected. It's an extremely broad net that it casts. So though these measures have been invoked in response to protests against government policies in response to the pandemic, particularly the use of illegal blockades during these protests, as we've seen since late January, the Emergencies Act is still in place. And going forward, it's not clear at all how the government is planning on enforcing these measures, what evidence or intelligent or threshold will be used to satisfy a reasonable belief that a breach of the peace could occur. So for example, we cite this in our notice of application. Let's say protests were organized in response to the government's invocation of the Emergencies Act. Would it be possible for the government and for the police to conclude that a peaceful assembly could lead reasonably to a breach of the peace, given what has just taken place in Ottawa? It's easy to imagine this scenario, and so there's a clear chilling effect. There's a clear, it almost seems like a legislative presumption that any assembly, any protest could lead to a breach of the peace, and therefore, emergency powers are triggered. This instills fear in those who might otherwise wish to participate in lawful demonstrations against government actions, which is the lifeblood of our democracy. As well, it seems clear on its wording that the emergency measures could present the reasonable hypothetical that somebody could be charged and convicted of an offense under the section for participating in a protest that never actually resulted in a breach of the peace. It doesn't actually criminalize participation in a demonstration of where a breach of the peace actually occurs, but just where it's reasonably believed. So if a police officer could give evidence that he or she reasonably believed that a protest could escalate into a situation where there was a breach of the peace, breaking the law, then they would be justified in enforcing emergency measures against a protester. Finally, this section draws no distinction between protesters who actually participate in a breach of the peace or break the law, and those who don't. The only intent required is an intent to participate in a public assembly or a protest as a whole, and not that an actual law is actually broken. So in other words, if someone attends a protest with the sole intention of holding up a sign, let's say, on the front lawn of Parliament, or on a plaza in front of City Hall, because keep in mind, the Emergencies Act applies throughout the country, not just in Ottawa, once the federal government invokes it, they would be guilty of a criminal defense if some other protesters join them and decided to block the roads surrounding Parliament or surrounding Toronto City Hall or Vancouver City Hall in a way that offended the prohibition. And similarly, on the writing of this law, they would be guilty of an offense if it could simply be reasonably expected that an event might occur, even if it doesn't, and even if they had no intent in participating in an unlawful circumstance arising from a protest. So as I hope I've demonstrated, this prohibition is not minimally impairing. It fails this branch of the Section 1 reasonably limited rights provision because it goes further than necessary. Instead of targeting actual unlawful conduct, it prohibits any participation, peaceful participation, in a protest where officials reasonably believe that a breach of the peace might occur. And I can tell you, from my time as a criminal lawyer, that police have a different sense of when the threshold for reasonable belief, I mean, they're just humans, of course, but it's perceptual, and leaving it up to subjective perception creates an extraordinary chilling effect, an extraordinary chilling effect that goes to the heart of the lifeblood of democracy. So let's talk about Section 7 briefly of the Charter. This is the section of the Charter that protects life, liberty, and security of the person. We also say that the emergency measures violate Section 7 of the Charter. They're deprivation of the right to liberty because they carry with them the threat of significant jail sentences, and they're not in accordance with the principles of fundamental justice because they're overbroad, and they have effects that are grossly disproportionate to the objectives. Okay, let's talk about Section 8 of the Charter and some of these truly extraordinary, truly unprecedented economic and financial measures. So our position is that Sections 4 and 5 of the economic measures violate Section 8 of the Charter. Section 8 of the Charter protects the right against unreasonable search and seizure. So Section 4 requires financial institutions to register with FinTrak if they are in possession of property that is owned by or held on behalf of a person who has participated in an unlawful assembly, and to report this information to FinTrak, which is the financial watchdog governing authority, if they have reasonable grounds to suspect that a transaction has been conducted relating to the commission of a money laundering or terrorism-related offense. Section 5 requires mandates, financial institutions to report to the RCMP and to C C I S if they have property in their possession or control that they have reason to believe may be owned, held, or controlled by on behalf of a person who is participating in an unlawful assembly, so a protest. Now, Canadian citizens, Canadian permanent residents, we all enjoy reasonable expectations of privacy over the information that banks hold about us, including the details of accounts, funds possessed, the way money is spent. So these economic measures requiring financial institutions to provide that information to C C I S and RCMP constitute a search, constitute an exception to the general right to privacy. And of course, these searches don't require a warrant. So our position that we've made to the court is that these provisions violate Section 8 of the Charter because they don't comply with the basic requirement which has been established since 1984 in the Supreme Court's decision in Hunter v. Soudum, that for a statute, for a law, which authorizes a search, as we say the economic measures do, to be for a law which authorizes a search, as we say the economic measures do, to be reasonable under the Charter, it must require prior judicial authorization based on reasonable grounds, so a warrant. So for a police to have identifying information, reasonable grounds for justifying the search. These provisions do not make any requirement for a warrant or prior judicial authorization before a search takes place, nor do they define the standard upon which a financial institution must satisfy itself, that it is dealing with a designated person, a person who has participated in or supported an illegal assembly, before turning that person's financial information over to CSIS and the RCMP. So those are the CCF's arguments in our application, challenging the government's invocation of the Emergencies Act. I want to make one more comment on this note, because we've gotten many notes, emails, phone calls asking about this, and this is just important. Whether, and this is not yet a plug for donations, although if you would like to donate in support of this challenge, you can go to the ccf.ca/donate. But I just want to clarify this, and I want to say why this is important, even irrespective of our own self-interest in this aspect. There's no possibility of frozen assets as a result of donating to the Canadian Constitution Foundation or to the Civil Liberties Association, which is also challenging the invocation of the Act. We've gotten this question a lot, and so I just want to go through why this is not something that you need to worry about. But I also want to say that it's extremely distressing to me, that it's a question that I think is somewhat reasonable to ask and reasonable to fear. It's extraordinary to me that in 2022 in Canada, this is where we are. But let's go through this. So the relevant provision of the Order in Council states, "A person must not directly or indirectly use, collect, provide, make available, or invite a person to provide property to facilitate or participate in any assembly referred to in subsection two one," which is the illegal assembly protest provision, "for the purpose or for the purpose of benefiting any person who is facilitating or participating in such an activity." So first, the CCF is a registered charity, and we carry out our activities in furtherance of a valid charitable purpose, which is to defend constitutional liberties in courts of law and public opinion. But second, just to be clear, as should be clear, after I've been talking for more than 30 minutes about this, we are challenging the validity of the federal government's invocation of the Emergencies Act. We are not directly or indirectly supporting the protest. We have no affiliation with the protest. We take no position on the protest, nor do any funds collected in furtherance of this legal case support the protest. This is a matter of adjudicating the proper and constitutionally-permissive scope of executive power and the legal test of the Emergencies Act. This is the first time the Act has been invoked. It's extraordinarily important that we have a judge walk us through when the Emergencies Act is properly invoked, whether the government has met its burden of proof, what its justification is. In other words, this is not just about, although this is an extraordinarily important event in Canadian history, but it's also, this is a case that will have precedental history, precedential authority, that will have impacts for generations to come. So this is an extraordinarily important pure legal, pure legal case. So if you have any other questions about that, we're happy to answer them. But why do I raise this as well? Because this is how our freedoms get frittered away, not just by the text of laws that constitute overreach, but also by the chilling effects that goes beyond the wording of the text. So when we start to police ourselves, when we start to become fearful, even above and beyond laws that are as overbroad and draconian as this law is, that's when our freedoms really can wither away. So let's just be clear about what the law says and what it doesn't say. Okay, so, let's see. We are 35 minutes past the hour. So I think what I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the other Charter rights that have been implicated throughout the course of this pandemic. Then I'm going to turn to talk for just a couple of minutes about another really important case that you should be aware of, that the CCF is engaged in right now, if you're not already aware of, in B.C., and then we will turn it over to questions. So the Charter is an explicit constitutional guarantee of certain political and civil rights that form part of our constitution. And so rights that have been implicated over the course of the pandemic have been Section two, which we talked about in our Emergencies Act challenge, fundamental freedoms like freedom of conscience, religion, freedom of thought, belief, expression, freedom of the press, freedom of assembly. Section six, mobility rights. So this is the right of Canadian citizens to enter, remain in, leave Canada, take up residence in any province. So of course, that if there have been many government laws that have entrenched and infringed on the right to mobility, quarantine hotels, which the CCF challenged, for the most part, unsuccessfully, our application was denied, although we did obtain a compassionate exemption to the quarantine hotel rules, which, if you don't recall, imposed a requirement to quarantine for three days for up to $3,000 in order to clear a second PCR test. Section seven, right to life, liberty, and security of the person, which has of course been widely impacted. Section eight, freedom from unreasonable search and seizure, also our privacy rights. So of course, our Emergencies Act challenge has a very important Section eight argument because the financial provisions constitute a gobsmacking violation of the right against illegal searches or warrantless searches. But also keep in mind the extent to which our cellphone data, our movement tracking have been affected throughout the course of the pandemic. We know that there's been extraordinarily, extraordinary tracking of Canadians' movements. And then of course, Section 15, equality rights, equal protection and benefit of the law without discrimination. And as I mentioned, the Charter also has something called the limitation clause, which is contained in Section one. And this clause has been doing, has been working overtime in allowing governments to justify certain infringements of Charter rights. The text says, "The Charter guarantees the rights and freedoms set out in it, subject to only such reasonable limits prescribed by law, as can be demonstrably justified in a free and democratic society." So, let me just skip through some of my notes here, and let's talk about vaccine passports. So, the Overton window shifted really quickly on the issue of vaccine passports, as well as vaccine mandates. So first, I'll talk about the vaccine passports, and then I'll tell you a little bit about our B.C. case. So the CCF's basic position is that vaccine passports are unconstitutional, both on the basis of Section seven, life, liberty, and security of the person. They also engage Section 15, the right to equality, and our position is that they cannot be justified under Section one. And so Manitoba was an early adopter of vaccine passports, and the CCF did some early effective advocacy. We sent a letter to the Manitoba government, which initially had no medical exemptions to its vaccine passports. We did some advocacy on behalf of a young woman who developed pericarditis, which is a rare but noted side effect of the Pfizer vaccine, or after her first dose of the Pfizer vaccine, and Manitoba did add a medical exemption. In Ontario and Quebec, there are very limited exemptions to the vaccine passport, so myocarditis and anaphylaxis are the only documented exemptions. And in B.C., things changed pretty quickly. So in May of 2021, Bonnie Henry said that there was no way that B.C. would recommend inequities be increased by use of things like vaccine passports for services and for access in British Columbia. Then in September, she changed her tune and announced that B.C. was announcing a vaccine passport to gain access to a long list of publicly accessible events and services deemed nonessential. The goal was to increase vaccination rates, and of course, to increase the cost of remaining unvaccinated. And initially, the government, much to our shock, given the state of things elsewhere in the country, announced that there would be no medical and no religious exemptions to the vaccine passport. They subsequently shifted their position a little bit, and they provided for exemptions, but only on a case-by-case basis, meaning exemptions would have to be applied for in each case, only in the case of anaphylaxis or in the case of pericarditis, only to be granted by public health itself. And so individuals that are applicants to the CCF's challenge, like a teenage girl who developed heart inflammation following her first dose, would be eligible only for a deferral, not a permanent exemption. In Ontario and Quebec, she would have been granted an exemption. And then there are other serious conditions that a patient involved in our challenge are not covered at all in B.C. So involved in our case is a woman in her 30s who developed nerve damage following her first dose of the vaccine, partial paralysis of her arm, which can take a long time to diagnose and treat, and she is not, she does not qualify for an exemption. And so we're challenging this. We brought a petition against the B.C. government. Our position is that government rules during a pandemic must be designed according to sound medical and scientific advice and evidence, and policies cannot on their face discriminate against medically vulnerable people who are our most vulnerable citizens. It must accommodate medical exemptions. So the CCF, just to wrap up on this, we filed our constitutional challenge via petition to the vaccine passport provisions with respect to their failure to create an effective and comprehensive regime for medical exemptions. And we argue that this failure violates the equality rights of individuals whose disabilities or health status prevents them from being able to safely become vaccinated against COVID-19. And the case will be heard in April. You can sign up for Freedom Updates at the ccf.ca for updates on the case and the arguments made. And of course, B.C., unlike other provinces throughout the country, has indicated that they do not intend in the near future to revoke their vaccine passports. Okay, so thank you for bearing with me. There was a lot to get through, and there was a lot that I didn't even get through, but I really wanted to take you guys through our Emergencies Act arguments. So let's take some questions. So Christine Russ, do you have any questions that you can relay to me?
Yeah, sure. I've been going through the questions. We have, I'm going to start with ones that we've seen a few versions of. So the first question, we've seen a bunch of people asking, is how long will the challenge to the Emergencies Act take? If we've said urgent, what does that mean?
Yes, we've asked for it to be heard on an urgent basis. We think that this should be a fairly straightforward matter to be heard. It doesn't involve complicated scientific evidence or anything like that. Usually, I can speak from several years of experience of public constitutional litigation. The government will probably push for a longer timeline, will counter with a shorter timeline. I would say realistically, the best we could hope for is to have a hearing date in March. And once it's heard, it should be heard within a day, and we should have a decision shortly after that. But unfortunately, the judicial system is not known for its speed.
Okay, so another question that we, I've seen a few of, is if we win, if the court agrees with us and finds that the use of the Emergencies Act was improper and that it was unconstitutional or a violation of some Charter rights, what happens then? Does this mean the government can't do this in the future? What is the result that we would achieve? What does victory look like?
So we're asking for the invocation of the Act and all of the measures that I went through, so the emergency measures, the economic measures, the orders in council that were imposed subsequent to the invocation of the Act. So let me go back, there's two pieces. So we'd be seeking a judicial declaration with corresponding jurisprudence that the invocation of the Act was illegitimate, and so quashing the invocation of the Act and reasons for why, with the thought that this will create some scaffolding around government's ability to invoke Emergencies Act in the future. And the second would be to declare the following, the sort of subordinate measures that I went through, the economic measures, the emergency measures, to be declared null and of no force or effect.
So another thing I'm seeing, a few questions related to, is if the government rescinds some of these emergency orders before the 30 days is up or before the hearing, or if the Senate, who's currently debating the ratification of the Emergencies Act invocation, if they don't ratify it, does that change our application? Does it get dismissed? What happens in that case?
Well, once the Prime Minister invokes the Emergencies Act, it's immediately triggered into effect. So the Emergencies Act will still have been in force for however long it's enforced. And so there still will be a serious question as to whether it was rightfully invoked. So the whole piece that I mentioned about wanting a judge to go in and assess whether the government was justified in invoking it, that doesn't change at all. The existing Charter challenges or the existing Charter claims, of course, if those laws, if the Emergencies Act is not fully passed by the Senate, then presumably those Order in Council measures will dissipate and they'll go away. However, any actions, any person who suffered Charter harm or who was affected during the time when those regulations were in effect, they would still have Charter claims.
So we have a question from Tim H., who wants to know if he'll be able to observe the hearing on the Emergencies Act.
Well, we don't know yet. So first of all, we don't have a hearing date yet. I expect, and I expect that when we do have a hearing date, it will be on Zoom, unfortunately. Still seems to be the case. If it is on Zoom, of course, the courts are subject to the open court principle, and they should be open to the public. So yes, and sign up for email updates at the ccf.ca for more information about that.
So we have a question from Randy Savoy, and I'll, I'm going to paraphrase it, but it's about how much deference the government will get from the court. So throughout the pandemic, we've seen courts giving a lot of deference to government decisions, especially related to health and science. Will this be any different, or should we, are we anticipating the government getting a lot of deference here as well?
Yeah, so a few comments about that. First is that unlike our other COVID-19-related litigation, I mentioned, I mentioned our quarantine hotels case, but of course, we've had many other cases dealing with lockdowns, dealing with stay-at-home orders, dealing with religious gathering limits. And it is true that we have seen the judges just, you know, entirely deferential. And in part, we can understand why that is, although I am very critical of that. I think that, I think that COVID-19 has just been given extraordinary license to governments to encourage deference to a point that is, you know, had taken so much of the thrust out of our rights. Having said that, this case is different, because this case does not involve, public health expertise, does not involve scientific evidence. This is about the strict legal test on the basic statutory requirements of the Emergencies Act and whether that threshold was met. And so judges are well within their expertise to look at existing provisions under the Criminal Code, existing provincial laws, existing federal authorities. This is well within the judicial wheelhouse, and so we do not expect the same level of deference where a judge, of course, is going to defer to a public health expert on a question of whether quarantine hotels are necessary to curb the spread of COVID-19, because they're not public health experts. They don't have literally the ability to counter that. And we don't want our judges to wade in and become public health experts, but there's much more to say about that. But that's not the case here. Here, they're being asked to interpret a legal standard, and furthermore, I would also say that our position is that the Emergencies Act should be interpreted as a quasi-constitutional statute, and so should be interpreted strictly, which means... and so should be interpreted strictly, which means less deference to government policy rationales.
So we have some questions related to our claim as it relates to the Canadian Civil Liberties Legal Challenge. What's the difference between the two challenges? We announced the same day as the Canadian Civil Liberties Association. Why did we file our materials today instead of the day we announced?
Yeah, so our lawyers, so we're very lucky to work with one of the leading constitutional law scholars in the world, Sujit Chowdhury and Jenani Shanmugathan. Sorry if I butchered your name, Jenani. And they've been working furiously throughout the weekend. I can't speak exactly to how the CCLA filed. I think they filed after a day. But I can say that our application focuses on strict questions of executive overreach, focuses on the proper limits of federal authority and how they entrench into provincial authority. And so really, you know, the proper executive limits, the sort of limits on the executive branch and when the extraordinary powers, which are extended of the executive branch, when they can be rightfully invoked. Having said that, we don't see our application as at odds with the CCLA's application at all. In fact, we're asking the court to join our applications and to hear them at the same time.
So we have received a lot of questions about the hack of information from GiveSendGo and the publication of names, donation amounts, addresses in some cases. People are wondering if that is illegal, if it's something we can do anything about, if it's something we're looking at.
So GiveSendGo is a private company. And so while certainly there may be a breach of GiveSendGo's sort of fiduciary relationship vis-à-vis its donors. And while we think that the situation and the doxing is abhorrent, should be condemned, GiveSendGo is not the government. So GiveSendGo is not subject to constitutional law claims. However, you know, the measures that are taken by the government in mandating banks to forward private information to them, that does attract constitutional scrutiny. And that's why I spoke at length about why we submit that the financial provisions directing banks to share personal information to the RCMP, presumably so those accounts can be frozen. That is a violation of the Section 8 right against warrantless searches.
So we have a question from Zartan and he has a question about protests. So can there still be legal protests in Canada based on the Emergency Act right now? And how can peaceful protests still take place without risking being called illegal or having funds seized?
Yeah, so this is the whole problem. This is the whole problem with the overbreadth of the Emergencies Act orders in council, which say that if a police officer reasonably believes that a protest, even if it's a peaceful protest, could lead to a breach of the peace, that it would be prohibited under the Emergencies Act. And so we say this is way overbroad. Even if, let's say, you show up at a protest, you intend to just picket peacefully and then some other group of people show up and they block off a road and they don't protest peacefully, it seems that first you could be charged in conjunction with them, even if you had no intent to break the law, you only intended to protest peacefully. Even if that doesn't happen, even if a group just congregates in front of City Hall and nothing happens, nothing unlawful happens, but a police officer for some reason gets the whiff of something and says that he reasonably, he or she reasonably believes that a breach of the peace may occur, that would also be prohibited under the Emergencies Act. So this is why we think certainly at this point, in the first place, the Emergencies Act was never justified in being invoked. Certainly now that the most pressing matters have been cleared, we were shocked that the Prime Minister declined to revoke the Act this week and is pushing forward and doubling down on it. And it's extraordinary, it's an overreach. If there's some information that the Prime Minister has about why he thinks it's necessary, he ought to disclose it to the public immediately. But you know, more realistically, they just would like to have these powers for a bit longer. They say that the situation is fragile and they should really be held accountable for that.
So we have a question, and I'd love an answer to this generally from the government. Why does the government create laws that are contrary to the Constitution? And why do they enact these laws until it is challenged by someone in court? Shouldn't they have to check if their law is compliant with the Charter and our Constitution before enacting it?
Wow, so this is something that people have wrote doctoral thesis on. So a few things to say. First is that the Trudeau government, interestingly, since early days, since 2016, I believe, have a policy that whenever they pass a new law or a regulation, they affix what is called a charter statement to it. So they have somebody in the Department of Justice review the law and say this is charter compliant. However, we've been watching the charter statements that have come out from C11, the online harms bill, where Minister Lamedy just said this is not a violation of free expression. So it's very much a rubber stamping exercise. But the government has, you know, you know, made noises that it cares to address this. Because I agree, why should we have to deal with this lengthy process of hiring lawyers and bringing laws when the government should just act in a way that's compliant with the Charter in the first place? However, in practice, it doesn't happen because governments tend to take more powers than they're lawfully allotted. But that brings in a sort of different model, which is, people have called it dialogue theory, which is Parliament acts or the legislature acts and the courts are there as a check and balance to tell them where they got it wrong, where they made the wrong assessment. And you could say that that balance is a bit out of whack, where over the last two years, and I hope that this isn't the case with our current matter with the Emergencies Act, where the courts have become extraordinarily deferential. And at the same time, legislatures, federal government, but also certainly the provinces are not innocent of this. The, the, sorry, the legislatures have overreached and they've gone too far in entrenching on our liberties. And at the same time, judges have withered back largely for reasons I discussed earlier, that they're not public health experts, that they tend to defer to governments when they say that public health warrants extraordinary measures. And as a result, you can see that, you know, the protections for our rights have become greatly eroded.
Okay, this is going to be the second last question. And it's, could we bring in an interlocutory injunction to stop the use of the Emergencies Act? And maybe explain to people what an injunction is?
Yeah, so an injunction is essentially a preliminary judicial determination or judicial order that a government sees, or not just a government, but in this case, the government sees enforcing a certain law or undergoing a certain activity because of immediate harm that it's causing. Here, an injunction is not available because we are, we as the CCF, as a public interest litigant, we cannot show that we ourselves are suffering from immediate harm. Furthermore, by the time bringing an urgent application, bringing an urgent injunction, the timeline is pretty similar. Governmental laws, so any law of Parliament is presumed to be constitutional. So it's extraordinarily rare to get an injunction against the government. However, here, we wouldn't even qualify for it because we ourselves are not currently suffering harm, except just as Canadian citizens. However, the Alberta government has indicated they are also going to be challenging the Act and they could presumably make an argument that they were suffer on behalf of the citizens of Alberta, that they were suffering harm. And the CCF is considering intervening in a future challenge brought by Alberta.
So the last question is, and our people have written to ask what they can do to fight back against this and how they can help.
Well, we have put out our materials. You can share our materials and our notice of application and our analysis of the Emergencies Act. You can go to the ccf.ca, you can follow Christine at C Van Guin, myself at J O B E A R O M on Twitter. You can disseminate the information to your social networks. You can go to t h e ccf.ca/donate. And when you donate, you can put in the box that you would like your donation to go 100% towards supporting our challenge of the Emergencies Act. You can sign up for Freedom Update. And as a final plug, everybody on our email list will be granted complimentary access to a new course on constitutional law and your rights under the Charter, which has been prepared with lawyers, academics from across the country, going really in-depth to all of your rights under the Constitution. So when you sign up for Freedom Updates for free at the ccf.ca, you'll be given first access to the course when we release it to the public or to our list, I should say, next week. And I will say that we are 100% a private organization. We are entirely financed by individual Canadians who wish to protect their freedoms and liberties under the Constitution, like you. We don't get any government support. The only way that we're able to fight these overreaches, to work with some of the best lawyers in the country, to hold the government to account is by donations. Every bit helps. And so we really appreciate your support.
Okay, that was everything. We're out of time. There are more questions, but we don't have time to get to them. So thanks everyone who sent in a question and if you tweet it at us, we can try and answer it.
Yeah, you can tweet us, you can contact us through our website. Please keep in touch. We get most of our cases through members of the public, so you can get in contact with us. A replay of this town hall will be up on YouTube, so you can search for CCF's YouTube channel. Like, subscribe. Christine puts out video Freedom Updates a couple of times a month. And thank you for caring about your freedoms. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks everyone.
Thanks everyone. Take care.